Welcome, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. It is Monday, June 21st, 2021. And, sorry, just get this on the screen. And Barbara, will you please call us to order?
Yes, so the following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public law, 1975, amended 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during the state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. While notices are on file with the Board Secretary, in addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions are published in the Asbury Park Press and City of Asbury Park website. A copy of the notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines of the virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Everyone, can you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
One nation, your God. Because of the Constitution of Justice.
Okay, and now I will, I'm sorry, now I will take real call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Trudy Syphex is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallopo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Krizak.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the first items that we have up are the minutes for January 7th of our regular meeting. If there are any modifications, if not, can I get a motion to pass it, to approve? Motion to approve?
Oh, sorry, Barbara, I don't know.
Go ahead.
June 7th is the first one you?
Correct.
June, okay, I had one, I think I had one for this, and let me, very small. This is June 7th, correct. Just on page one where it says, "Souter, what is the dimension of fence openings towards the top?" And then the architect, I believe, said, "Start," it says there, "start at the bottom solid," because, so not so easy to climb or something. It's a minor change, but that's all.
So I'm sorry, what was the correction?
You know, I did something stupid. I rewrote it here. So it's under, it's, I don't know what it says in the old one. It says Souter, it says something about fence openings.
Okay, is it, is it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Souter. Is it your wording or the architect's answer? Okay, all right, got it. I got, I got all of it, so I will make that change.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anything else for that meeting?
Motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. It's Jen Souter.
Okay. Second, Clayton.
I have a motion by Jennifer Souter and a second by Yvonne Clayton. And everyone except Mr. Henry and Trudy Syphex are eligible to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes approved of June 7th, 2021.
And now we have the minutes of the June 3rd special meeting that we had. I had requested, I have a couple of minor modifications. All right, major, maybe not, to, to one of my statements on page two. I'd spoken to Irene about it already. It was about wanting, encouraging to charge residents for bike storage. I believe that I said I encourage not to charge residents.
Yes, we will change that to discourage.
Courage as opposed to encourage. And also a little bit further down on the page where it said, we strongly, I said, "We strongly suggest this be included." I just wanted to put it that we were talking about the green roof. So I asked Irene that if we would just put that in parentheses because it's kind of taken out of context there.
Okay, got it.
Anybody else have something?
That's Jen Souter again. I have two small things. Also on page two, again, Souter, it says, it says currently, "No losing that plant material must be, but maybe can incorporate." And I just, just to clarify a little, I said, "If stoop bigger, you will lose the plant material, but people would have space to incorporate planters on the stoop." I can send it to you, Irene.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, if you can email me the exact statement, I would appreciate that. Otherwise, I can go back and review the tape.
No, 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 I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you so much, thank you.
No problem. And the second, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Down lower on the same page, again, Souter, it says, "Seems like something good to have in there." I just said, "If green roof is optional, it is likely to get taken out." I said that first, so I'll send that to you as well.
So just change the placement.
I think it only says right now, "Seems like something good to have in there." It doesn't refer to the green roof, same as Barbara's comment. Thank you.
Got it. All right, great, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 3rd, the special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second, this is Eric.
Thank you, Eric. I have a motion by Barbara Krizak and a second by Eric Gallopo. And everyone except for Trudy Syphex eligible to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes of June 3rd, 2021, approved.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to suggest, go ahead.
Sorry, Barbara, just, just, just for, just for the record, the minutes of June 7th will be marked into evidence as Exhibit B1. They are on the screen now. And the minutes of June 3rd, 2021 will be marked into exhibit as B2. All right, and then we're going to go a little out of, out of order with the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, I'd like to just get these three applications just out of the way. And then we can proceed with the ordinances. We have our first application, which was AP Share Holdings, Shore Holdings. It will be, we're requesting that it be carried to 7/26 without further notice. My question to you, Jack, is that since we're going to be going into, in person, is it still without notice?
I think we should have notice.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're going to be revamping all the notices, the annual notice and all that, to revert back to the original system. I would think that anybody that's working off the old notice would think it's going to be virtual. So we should request re-notification.
Okay, I will do that. Of the attorney. Okay, so we don't have to carry it then?
Well, you can carry it to the date, but it will be with further notice.
With further notice, okay.
Okay. We need to vote?
Yes. Yeah, this right, we can officially put it on the agenda.
I'm sorry, who was, who made a motion?
No, no, I asked, do we need to vote? It sounds like we have to vote.
Yes.
Yeah, so, this is Mike Manzella. I move to carry this application to July 26th with further notice.
Thank you.
I get more.
Thank you. I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Mayor Moore. And we'll take a vote. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Trudy Syphex is absent. Alexis Taylor.
Oh, yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you. Application carried to July 26th, 2021 with further notice.
Okay, we have our next application, 316 Main Avenue LLC. I see that it says that the application is referred to the DRC. I don't believe that we have a date yet as to when the DRC can meet. So I don't know, how, how can we get a, do we have an opening for the next, next time that this can be carried to, Irene?
Yeah, I would suggest we carry it to the next meeting of July 12th, 2021. And try to get them ready for, prior with the DRC. Because I believe the professionals have already worked on their reviews.
Yes, they've already worked on their reviews, but I know that there's going to have to be modifications made to those.
Right.
So, does that, does that work for you, Andy?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Just so that you know, at this point, it doesn't look like the DRC can meet this week. If you wanted to meet just with the professionals, that's fine. Otherwise, we're going to have to meet next week, and hopefully we can find a date.
That's fine. There's, from what I understand, there's a lot of engineering stuff that has to get done. I'd rather meet this week, have my guys start working on that, so it leaves that aspect of it. We can move forward.
Okay.
And then we can work out a date next week, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so then I guess that we're going to need a motion to have this, this application carried to July 12th with further notice?
With notice, correct.
Jim Henry, so moved.
I'll second.
Mike.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Henry and a second by Barbara Krizak. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yvonne's muted.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Okay, application for 316 Main and, I'm sorry, we'll do them separately. Carried to July 12th, 2021 with further notice.
All right, so what, what's the, so do we have to do, like, for the Linus Holdings, 700 banks? That's in conjunction with 316 Main?
That is correct.
Okay, so then this one is also to be carried to 7/12 with further notice, with notice.
All right. We get a motion?
Jim Henry, so moved.
Thank you.
Yvonne Clayton, second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Yvonne Clayton. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yeah.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Jennifer Souter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Eric Gallopo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you. Application for 700 banks, carried to July 12th, 2021 with further notice.
Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to our first, our board review, the municipal opt-out ordinance, Michelle Alonso.
Michelle, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the city.
Michelle Alonso, M.I.C.H.E.L.O., last name is A-L-O-N-S-O. I am the Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I am also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, so good evening, board members and members of the public. I am here to give a brief presentation about the City of Asbury Park's proposed ordinance to opt out of cannabis legislation, of opting out of permitting cannabis wholesaling, delivery, cultivation, retail, manufacturing, and distribution in the City of Asbury Park. To give you a little bit of background to this and also why we're opting out. So as most of us know, last November, voters in New Jersey by referendum voted in the majority to permit cannabis, AKA marijuana, sales and the legality of possession of marijuana in New Jersey so that it's no longer criminal to have it. It's no longer criminal to consume it, and it's no longer criminal to have it delivered to you. So in that vein, after referendum, there's regulations that need to be put in place. So in February, the state legislature passed legislation that was the enabling, or should say, is the enabling statute for marijuana cultivation, distribution, and sales. And in that legislation, they give municipalities in the state of New Jersey the option by August 21st to either develop regulations for marijuana, develop no, do nothing, develop no regulations, and it's permitted without regulations in your municipality, or to opt out. If you opt out, you can opt in at any time. And municipal, and in three years, if we opt out, we would have to opt out again if we so desire to stay opt out, opted out. If you don't opt out or opt in, as I stated, August 21st, all forms of the processing, cultivation, sale marijuana is automatically permitted in a municipality, in an industrial zone, and in a retail zone. So the state has developed six classifications of marijuana processing and possession. And it is cultivation, wholesaling, manufacturing, distribution, delivery, and retail. And a municipality can choose to opt in or opt out of any of those categories. However, even if a municipality opts out of delivery, meaning that a business in the municipality cannot be in the, be located in the municipality, it cannot ban the delivery of marijuana to anyone, any place in the municipality, whether it's at a house, a retail establishment, or in a park. So that's important to know because even if a municipality decides to opt out of delivery, you can still have delivery to your, to your home or wherever. But we are, you have before you tonight a overall opt-out ordinance. The municipal council, and upon advisement of myself and legal councils, to opt out as of the moment. Because we would only have till August 21st to look at it and to write our regulations for all six categories, and also to determine where in the city it should be permitted. I also have some legal questions based on the statutes that I'm seeking a legal answer to in how it pertains to redevelopment areas. Because we are pretty unique here in the city in that almost all our commercial areas are in redevelopment areas. The state statute states that in a, in a commercial zone that marijuana retail would be a conditional use. And you really cannot have conditional uses in redevelopment areas. So that's a question I'm still seeking answers to. Thus, we need more time, and it has been recommended that we opt out while we have some time to develop our regulations. So I'm saying all that, just besides a little background, we are not necessarily anti-cannabis. We're not saying that in the future, after we look at this more closely, we would not come back to this board to opt in. Right now, we are electing to opt out because we do not have enough time for August 21st to examine what is best for the City of Asbury Park in terms of regulation.
If I may?
Yes.
That matter, sure. So essentially, this, this is a stopgap measure to prevent having a carte blanche approval without any regulations being in effect, or just asking for more time, the city?
Essentially, yes. I mean, it doesn't say that per se because we're only trying.
That's the essence of this ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, that's all we need to know. Okay, that's all I need to know, rather.
I also think that, that based on the fact that we are a short town, we're still in the pandemic state, I think that it's extremely reasonable for us not to jump into something like this. I mean, it sounds like, I mean, it's something we really have to mull over very seriously. And creating resolutions in a hurry never ends well. So I'm guessing that that's probably why we need more time outside of some of your other concerns, Michelle?
Yes, yes, there's, there's the legal aspect, and there's the practical aspect to it.
And I just wanted to add, currently, the New Jersey League of Municipalities is recommending that we opt out.
Yes, or they're recommending that the state legislature did not give municipalities enough time, and that if a municipality feels as though they need more time to opt out. But yes, they acknowledge that the window for creating regulation was too short.
Michelle?
Yes.
If I may, isn't the actual, the ordinance itself, isn't that something that is sort of pro forma having been developed by the league?
Yes, we used a template.
Yeah.
That is being used by most municipalities who, who are deciding to opt out.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so the scope of this evening's hearing, questioning of the witness and comments, if any, is very limited to justice ordinance itself, not to any of the subjective or rules and regulations regarding marijuana sales within the city.
Um, Jack, I have a question. I actually have a few follow-up questions, and I'll try not to opine on marijuana sales. What, so it is the job of the board tonight to make a recommendation back to the council that has already made, passed a resolution on this? Are we just passing the resolution?
Yeah, our task tonight is like any other referral for review under Section 26 of the Land Use Law, that we look at it, we generally look at it for master plan inconsistency or consistency. And then we just vote and push it for, you know, push it back, yeah.
I noticed that the resolution itself is just a ban. It doesn't stipulate that it needs to be revisited in three years. Is that because we're deferring to the law itself? And that's where the three-year opt-in, opt-out timeframe comes in?
I can't answer that. I don't know why the council drifted the way they did.
I can, I can opine, because, yes, because the state stat, it doesn't need to be repeated because the state statute makes it clear. I also, we're talking about resolution, I want you guys to note that the council did something a little different this time. They adopted both the ordinance on first reading and a referring resolution. Typically, we, they just do a referring resolution, and it goes back to them for first and second reading. This time, they did the process of a first reading of the ordinance, again, because we are, it's pretty pressed for time. Because if the, the board, if so, you know, takes action tonight, it gives the council, again, not that many meetings to adopt. So it's really, they already did first reading the ordinance. Fred did a resolution because that is, as well, because that's what you, everyone's accustomed to. But this is really the, the ordinance that was sent to the board.
Okay.
So we've done a, for, I'm understanding the process. You've done a first reading, so if we wanted to add anything, a whereas, or whatever, that's not?
If we do so, that the council would have to do a first reading again.
Okay.
But I think the thought process, you know, this, like Jack had stated, this is pretty cut and dry, that this is a opt-out ordinance from a template that's been adopted by many municipalities in the state.
I, I do have a few more questions, and I guess then if we're not changing the resolution itself, this would go to the recommendations that I believe the planning board should send to the council. So if other people have questions just about the resolution itself, I'll, I'll hold off on my recommendations.
This is Eric Gallopo. Has there been any discussion or indication from the city council about when we might be reconsidering this? Because I feel like three years seems like a long time.
It'll be less than three years. I mean, this is, I mean, part of this is, as you know, your summer schedule's jam-packed right now with the board. Or you may not be aware, your schedule's jam-packed.
Oh, we're aware.
Yes, so I, I believe once we get past some of the hurdles, of the workload that the board is a little backed up upon, and waiting for, like I said, some of the legal guidance I need per redevelopment areas, that we are not going to wait with it, we're going to examine this in a, in good time. We're not going to wait three years to reexamine this.
Right, because, because, oh, go ahead, John.
And more here. Eric, I guarantee you, it will not be three years. We're just buying time because Trenton has not, Trenton has not given us good guidance on this law whatsoever. Whereas much of it passed like 80 to 20% in Asbury Park. I mean, the first law they passed was like, "But we won't tell your parents." And if that was on the ballot, I believe it would have failed 80 to 20. So we're looking for guidance from the Trenton. We're trying to do this right, and it will not be three years. We will get this right as soon as we get all the guidance we need from Trenton.
Yeah, and, and I guess my only thing is that, you know, there, I think there are two sides to this argument, of course. This is an opportunity, and it comes with significant risks as well. And by just opting out, doesn't mean it's not going to come here. And, you know, so we should have a thoughtful discussion about how our land use policies interact with our, you know, politics and policing and, you know, production, and how we might accommodate it, because it is legal.
And I mean to add to that, the economic opportunity egalitarianism, and, I mean, we do need to think about what businesses we are allowing. You know, it's kind of ironic that we're allowing another, or contemplating another ABC establishment, which has its own followers, but, you know, I, I think that there are different, the, an overwhelming number of people voted to allow this. And so I just want to, you know, remind us that it is in the hands of, of the voters that they did vote for this, and we have to do it the right way. I completely agree. But let's do it for everyone.
And Alexis Moore again, I totally agree with you as far as the overwhelming vote. But I've gotten like several text messages, emails, whatever they were, I don't know, from people. Again, I was the one who said, "I'll meet with everybody." And the city manager at the time, Uncle Capri Bianco, said, "If you're going to meet with one, you're going to meet with 100." It was about 70, and they were billionaire corporations from Canada, Vegas, Miami, LA. to local folk, Asbury Park, Neptune, everything wanted to do it. And I got a text message the other day that I saved. I'll play to anybody from a local resident who's deeply involved in this and said, hey, you guys did the right thing because the way this law is written and the way this is going, and the way the Superior Court judge said, the applications for the second round are medicinal, were not based on uh, the applications, but based on who they knew political.
Yeah.
Like, this is, this is not going to go to anybody that really is in like the equity zone and everything. The people that have gone through this and everything. So that's why we want to wait and do it the right way.
I, I totally support that, leveling the playing field and let's be thoughtful. Um, and not miss the economic opportunity if it does involve creating local jobs.
And, and, and normalizing illegal activity to assure that our policing policies are in line with
Well, that, that, I, don't forget, like I had stated, even if we do the opt out for warehousing and sales, every, well, after, uh, you know, two thousand, in two thousand twenty-two, it will be a hundred percent legal to possess it, consume it, except for, for anything that produces vapor or smoking, but you can consume it in public. And you, you can carry it so, and you can have it delivered to you.
Yeah.
Does any, anybody else on the board have any other, um, questions that they would like to?
Yeah, Barbara, Jim Henry, I have a question for Michelle. Michelle, uh, in several places, there is a, uh, uh, statement about the exception. And I, I'm a little bit foggy on how that exception applies. Uh, can you just give me an idea of, of a circumstance where that exception might, uh, come into play?
Jim, give me the actual reference.
Okay, well, if you, uh, if you look at, uh, the package page two eighty-three.
Yes.
Under the heading, now therefore, uh, be it, uh, and it is hereby ordained, the last, um, the last two lines, it says, except that the delivery of cannabis items and related supplies by a delivery service within the city shall be permitted. Uh, give me, give me an example. I, I can't get my head around what, what that really means.
Let, let, let me answer from Michelle's, you can correct me. The state law has six guidelines, which Michelle explained. Number six is delivery. And if Asbury Park opts out completely, we cannot stop another, uh, facility, be it healthcare, recreational, from Neptune, Madison, Madawan, Sabokin, Hoboken, anybody from delivery. That is against state law. Michelle, correct me.
Oh, you're correct. And that's what I had stated before, that if, um, a delivery service is located anywhere else in the state and they advertise that they do delivery in Asbury Park, you can call, text, email, do an online app and have marijuana and any other supplies related to marijuana consumption delivered to you in your home or in a public place, anywhere in the boundaries of Asbury Park.
Okay, so is this sort of like a, uh, a prescription being mailed to you? Is that the type of, no?
Oh, it's retail. It's like as if you wanted, um, something from a restaurant in Neptune and you called and used DoorDash. Me, you, you want, um,
Dope Dash.
What?
Dope Dash.
Dope Dash. No, but me like, uh,
Or hash. Hash Dash.
Pick a restaurant, like a, a restaurant that you like that's out of town. Like if, uh, the only one I could think of is that Baja Fresh on the highway. But you wanted Baja Fresh, you can call up or marijuana and say, I'd like it delivered to my house and they'll deliver to your house. No prescription needed. It's retail. It's a delivery.
Okay, all right.
And this opting out also prevents home cultivation, I'm assuming?
Well, the state of New Jersey does not permit home cultivation. The state legislation prohibited, uh, home cultivation. And I believe the state legislature is revisiting that. I also want to add that, um, one of the things that the state legislation also permitted that we'll be taking a look at is, um, lounges for consumption. Kind of, you know, like a bar, like you can go, you can purchase and you can consume on site.
This is Jen Sauter. I have one more question about the timeline. Um, so just so I understand correctly, if you, uh, if this was voted, or we went forward with this opt out, then, and I understand Mayor Moore saying that it's not going to happen, but if, if nothing happened, which we know is not going to happen in three years, then you go through this process again.
Yes.
That would be the trigger, but otherwise there's no, um, timeline within it. Like we are not stating any timeline and there is no required statement regarding timeline, other than yours. Okay. Do you want to understand? Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any other, uh, questions of, um, Ms. Alonso? Also, okay.
Well, I guess I do have one.
Go ahead.
What is the proposed process? Um, by which, I, I understand that, um, uh, and, and support that, you know, Trenton has not given any guidance about this. It won't come out until August 21st. It's kind of a mess of a rollout, everything else. But just as a city, what's in, within our control? What is, what is our plan?
Our, our plan is for me to have my questions answered about redevelopment plan areas. For us to also take a look at what other municipalities similar to us are doing, which I, it's very interesting what I'm discovering. And then for us, me, myself and, and our professionals and my staff to write some regulations and present it to the public and present it to the planning board.
And Alexis, and I'm probably going to be wrong. I mean, I, I believe it's a two percent and then a one percent. But, uh, I, I've seen redacted proposals to other towns from, say, a year to two years ago where, believe me, the numbers were a lot bigger than that. Uh, again, I was the guy who said, I'll meet with these people. So I met with like seventy-seven people. And they said, do you want two sweepers? Do you want five police cars? Do you want this? And, and the response was, no, we want a responsible person running a business, hiring local people.
Yep.
And getting back to the community and just running. So we weren't looking for up and above, but a lot of cities are getting up and above. But don't ever say that.
Right. I mean, I think capturing that, um, in whatever way, the economic value locally matters a lot, especially if you are taking on, um, any of the risk or whatever locally. It does not make sense to me that it goes to Trenton. Um, but I, so I just, I think that there are thoughtful ways of ruling it out beyond, I guess, just the straight up, land use policies where there could be a lot of input that then influenced the land use policies. And then it would, something that would come back in front of the planning board. But I think that, um, uh, you know, there are real economic drivers here.
Right. And the other thing I should add is that we, we have to discuss with the council the, the other aspect to regulating it, which is a license. In a license, you know, uh, Jersey City is imposing a license, other municipalities are imposing a license where you can do some, you know, some asks that go beyond zoning. And that would have to be concurrent.
I guess, I guess they were the redacted ones I saw.
Right.
Um, Jen Sauter, another question about process, when, so as you described, Michelle, very clearly, you know, how that next step would move forward if you're, if we went that way. Then, um, you said you present to the public, present back to the planning board. So is there any opportunity for other input? I think maybe I'm saying what Alexis just said again, but during that time before it gets presented.
Of course, yes.
Okay. Um, I bring that up as it relates to energy, energy use and some issues that are coming. I mean, things that come regarding energy in these facilities and, uh, things that we could do about related to energy use.
Uh, it's more, I, I give you my promise. I give you my word. Uh, this is a subject that is key on every city in New Jersey. Uh, many have opted out, some have opted in, Neptune's opted in, uh, Red Bank's opted in. So it's not like, I feel like an ogre saying like, you, you gotta drive to South Brunswick to get medicinal. So now it's a lot local. Uh, we, we're going to study this. We're going to study it hard and long. And yes, it'll go to the public before we make a decision.
All right. Does the board have any other, um, questions for, uh, Michelle? If we have no other questions, then please, Irina, please open the questions to the public. And I emphasize that we need to stay in the realm of what was discussed with Ms. Alonso's testimony. Um, and this is only about the opting out, uh, that's being proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Kerdek. I show one hand raised. Mr. McNally, go ahead and ask your question.
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNally, 710 Northeast, 7th Street, Point Beach, Florida. So, uh, to Ms. Alonso, my questions are. Um, number one, along with your presentation for review, if the opt out is passed tonight and according to Mayor Moore is going to be soon after that, a consideration because time is needed. I understand that part. But who is going to supplement the planning board with all the restrictions that remain in place? Which means you, you can't smoke marijuana in a bar, you can't smoke marijuana on the beach, you can't smoke marijuana on the boardwalk, you can't smoke marijuana in, in public buildings. Police can't come to work, haven't had marijuana the day before. Teachers can't come to work. And then the edibles, all that. In other words, how are you going to prevent the kids from getting edibles, THC edibles, from whoever gives it to kids and along with alcohol?
Excuse me. That's beyond the scope of what, excuse me.
What?
You didn't please. That's beyond the scope of what we are doing here this evening. I get what you're saying. It's very relevant and very important. But it's beyond what we're doing. That, all of that will have to be vetted out at the executive level well before it comes back to the planning board. But that's not the scope of what we're doing this evening. They're all valid questions and they have to be answered, absolutely. But not, not at this juncture. That's for a later date. That's the mayor and council. They're the legislative branch of government in Asbury Park. And they will have to explore all of those issues well in advance of creating any ordinances that they refer back to Asbury Park Planning Board for review and commentary.
All right. Do you have any other questions, Mr. McNally?
Yeah, I was, I was muted, so here I am back. So, uh, I, I agree, uh, Ms. Alonso, I, I agree. I don't know who recommended it. But I agree with the opt out and I, and I think that, uh, uh, for, for the mayor to say, or you to say for certain that it should be after the summer, I, I think is a little bit premature, but I, 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 I think, I think that that's your, your decision that you get on the record. I, I don't agree with it. I think
Mr. McNally, do you have a question? Please save your comments till the end.
Okay, am I going to be able to make comments tonight?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, so my last question is, uh, all, all, in order to per, present this opt out tonight, Ms. Alonso, you brought in all the municipal mandates and from the state and supplied the board with all those documents, correct?
No, I only provided them with the opt out ordinance. I gave oral testimony tonight regarding elements of the enabling statute from the state of New Jersey.
Okay, but in other words, you didn't give them the copy of the municipal mandate that you referenced?
No, I, because I don't need to give it to them because it is in every major press publication in New Jersey.
Okay, can I, I'm going to ask you a question. Are you aware that the cities that you mentioned and others, when they have planning board or board meetings or council meetings, the, the planners of the city supply that? Because it's not enough to say it's available. So are, are, I'm going to ask you, are you going to say again that you're not going to supply it to either the council or the board, the state municipal, uh, uh, mandate? You're not going to supply it. Is that correct?
Mr. McNally?
We don't need, oh, stop, turn around, turn around. We don't need, no, wait, we, let me, Mr. McNally, please. We don't need that. What we need tonight is the ordinance. That's all we're looking at. All of that documentation you're talking about is very important and very relevant. But we don't need that this evening for the purpose of voting on this ordinance to opt out. We will need all of that at some point in the future when the board is asked to review regulations, uh, recommended regulations, all of that. I agree with you. It's just not for this evening. It, your, your, your questions are valid, but not in connection with the review of the ordinance itself. It's a straightforward ordinance, opting out, as you heard, just to buy time and everything else will have to be developed and completely vetted with members of the public, public safety, all of that has to be considered before anything comes back to the planning board for the board to review.
And I want to state, Mr. Serpico, the ordinance before you, written by the city's legal council, makes reference to the exact statute.
Okay. Yeah, I get that. I guess. Yeah, no, no, we're not, no, nothing's being hidden. All of that is going to be there. The board will get it when they need it. We just need to deal with the ordinance to buy some time. That's essentially it.
All right, Mr. McNally, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, so the board, the board is going to vote tonight with, with no documentation.
That is not true.
That's not true.
Well, you just said the thing that the lawyer, the city lawyer
No, I said, we're here for the limited purpose of voting on a proposed ordinance. We don't need the rest of that.
I'm asking you, what is going to allow the board to vote to opt out or opt in? I know they don't have any
The testimony of the witness and the ordinance itself.
All right.
And it's been given to stop. Mute him. Please mute him. I'm not going to have a discussion with you. The or, the testimony and the ordinance speaks for itself. It's an opt out provision. There's nothing substantive beyond that, nothing subjective beyond that. There are no rules and regulations being proposed other than that the request of the city is to buy themselves some time to deal with this. That's all it is. It's that simple. Any other questions?
Mr. McNally, do you have any other questions?
No, no, because I, I can't really.
Okay, thank you. I don't show any other hands raised at this time. Please continue.
Okay, um, I'd like to now open it up to, uh, are there any uh, comments that the, uh, that the board members would like to make? Before we hear it from here, open it up for public comment. No? All right, can I get a motion to open to, for public comment?
Jim Henry will move second by Gallo.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Eric Gallo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Open to public comment.
All right, remember they have three minutes to, for public comment about the And remember that you have three minutes to for public comment about the information that was provided by Ms. Alonso.
Just one second, let's get this set up. And at the moment I show two hands raised, let's go with caller with phone number ending in 124, please state your name, your address, and then Mr. Serpico will swear you in, and then please wait for the clock to begin. Go ahead. Caller ending in 124, are you there?
Yes, 5124.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Moreno, is that you?
That's me.
Okay, great. Please state your name and your address, and then Mr. Serpico will swear you in.
Okay, Rita Moreno, M A R A N O, 504 8th Avenue, Asbury Park.
Rita, please, I can't see you, but please raise your right hand and tell me that you've done so.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rita, go ahead.
Okay, being an older person, I mean, this is beyond my scope of thinking, but we have enough problems in Asbury Park without adding this one to it. And somebody made a comment that the voters voted in the state of New Jersey. Well, the voters also ordered in Asbury Park not to have the pool, and we got the pool. So I don't think that's a good way to look at it. I think it's a dangerous thing for Asbury Park because we're only one square mile. And if Michelle is saying that it can't be in any industrial area or business area, there's not much left as a residential area, and I don't think anybody would want it in their backyard. So is there going to be restrictions on the residential area? Or can they just open up one of the houses and put it in? I'd like to know the answer to that, since all the other areas and redevelopment area too is not included. So where would they put it? There's only one place left, the residential area. You don't have an industrial park to put it in, we don't have any of that, one little mile. So which are the areas are they thinking about? One area is left. It's not on Cookman Avenue, it's not on the beachfront. Where else would you put it? It's not near a school. Only residential neighborhoods are left. And I don't know if anybody that would want it in a residential neighborhood. There's enough going on everywhere. So that would be my question, where would they put it if all those areas are taboo, sort of speaking? So is there an answer?
No, no, that's not what we're doing, that's not.
Oh, okay, well, that's my comment. If you mark out all those areas that Michelle mentioned, there's not many left in Asbury Park in the one square mile. So I'd like to know where that would be. Okay, that's my answer, that's my question, and I didn't get any answer, so I'll wait.
Oh, Jack.
And by the way, did this ordinance pass? Or is this going to be heard?
Rita, 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 all we're doing is reviewing the ordinance not to not to let anything happen like this at this point in time and give the city council more time to look into it. There's, we're not talking about the specifics about marijuana use in the city. This is an ordinance that says that they're not going to let let anybody open up at this point in time until in the future when the city has a chance to look at this.
Okay, it's fine, thank you.
Can we also point out that no businesses are allowed in residential zones? No businesses?
That's why I think there was confusion that I didn't say it was not permitted industrial zones, in fact, the opposite, state.
I know, I know that.
Okay, I just want to make that that clear, I didn't say that.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. And Mr. Magnoli, please state your name, your address, and then Mr. Serpico will swear you in.
Ernest Magnoli, 710 Northeast 7th Street, Point Beach, Florida. My right hand is raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I'm able to give my opinions about.
Please proceed.
Okay, this is where I can give my opinions, correct, my comments?
Yes, the clock has started your comments.
Limited, limited to what was presented this evening, yes.
Okay, okay, all right, so I don't agree with voting tonight because I don't think, although I think the pause is good, I just don't think that the board, from what I'm listening to, has enough understanding in paperwork and state paperwork. And basically, I heard that, well, the city attorney, Mr. Refredo, prepared a, like a, I don't know, a synopsis of this opt out, which in my opinion is not is not enough. I just, I just don't think it. And it seems like at the planning board meeting over and over and over again, the public is told that the way we're doing this, like to opt out or opt in or whatever, is really up to the the planning board based on state and municipal mandates and paperwork. But I just keep hearing that people either don't know what it is or don't know what it is, and I just don't understand why someone would would vote to opt out or opt in without really knowing everything, a lot more than what a synopsis of what Mr. Refredo and Ansel Grimm offered to the to the board. And when I listen to the board's comments, it just seems like, you know, everybody just wants to like get past this ban and say, well, where can we have it as quickly as possible? Because you mentioned all the financial benefits and and, you know, you want to keep up with the surrounding towns like Neptune who's making money. I just think it's not complete enough. But in the absence of being able to say anything else, I would I would expect that you vote to opt out, but I hope that the in the reconsideration to opt in, all the reasons why you opted out could be presented from the public and from the state, not just from a synopsis from the city attorney, Mr. Refredo and Ansel Grimm and the land use people. Well, that's my comment, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli. I do not show any other hands raised for public comment.
And can I get a motion to close public comment, please?
Jim Henry, motion to close.
My second.
I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Barbara Krizak, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, public comment closed.
Okay, after hearing what we've heard from from the public and from everything, is there anything else that the that the board would like to to comment on before we vote on this application or on this ordinance? Okay. Does anybody want to, I mean, I don't, do you need anything else, Jack?
No, other than just to advise you that this has been approached in other towns, this is a standard ordinance review. Our job is to find whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent with the master plan, and in our master plan, there is nothing that addresses this. So there's nothing about this that's inconsistent with the master plan, there's nothing that makes it consistent, it's just not mentioned. So there's no inconsistencies with this ordinance per se right now, which is just to opt out. At some point in the future, when you get back to subjective rules and regulations or the imposed rules and regulations, if the city's going to have a whole set of legislation for for marijuana sales and the like within the city, then then of course you'll look at it again then. But this is a pretty straightforward, no, no inconsistencies with the master plan.
All right, then I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to pass this ordinance, this opt out ordinance at this time.
Jim Henry, all second.
Thank you, I'll take I'll take Mr. Henry as a second. I have a motion by Barbara Krizak and a second by Jim Henry. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Soder?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak?
Yes.
Thank you. Municipal opt out ordinance approved?
No, not approved, recommended.
I'm sorry.
That it's not an inconsistency, because all we're doing is giving advice, we have no power under the MLU on this, that's the council. Okay.
Okay, our next agenda item is.
Sorry, Barbara, there we go.
It's an amendment to the Central Business District, Redevelopment Plan.
And that would be me?
That would be you.
Jack, would you?
Okay, let's get this morning again. Please raise your right hand, solemnly swear the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Name again for the record and your position with the city.
Michelle Alonso. I am the Director of Plan and Redevelopment for the City of Asbury Park. I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
Great, go ahead.
Okay, this is actually very simple. There was a request in the CBD for a plan amendment to have a micro brewery. And you received as a as a handout a map of exactly where the micro brewery is going to be, and this is the Asbury Brewing Company, just to let you know, has made the request. They would have a tasting room and brew beer on the at 614 Cookman Avenue, block 2404. So this is a simple amendment to the CBD plan to add the definition of micro brewery, which is the same as in the newly adopted zoning amendments, and to have it as a permit use only for this tax block. And that's, that is it, that is my presentation.
And the the request is consistent with the current master plan?
Yes, yes, it is, especially to also let everyone know that we had contemplated with the new zoning amendments that were were adopted, council adopted them, the to permit micro breweries in the city because it is, it is a use that is a modern use.
Okay, that's all I need to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question about the definition of micro brewery. How does it, how is this definition different from brewery?
Well, it's the, it's, we took the state licensing definition.
Okay.
Which was one of the things we, that was part of the master plan recommendation to standardize definitions in our zoning ordinance with those at the state level for things like this, things that require a license of some sort.
So when it says direct to consumers in limited quantities, then we're not defining quantities, we're, that's the state definition, and then everything else, we don't even know what those quantities are?
No, I mean, it's part of the state license.
Okay, so if the definition doesn't, like a brewery would be the same as a micro brewery? There's no distinction in our code?
Uh, no, there is a bit of a distinct, I mean, there's a distinction where we permit them, and a brewery typically does not have onsite consumption, a micro brewery has onsite consumption.
Okay, that's helpful.
I have, are you finished, Alexis?
I'll come, I'll come back, you go ahead, Jim.
I have several questions. Who's the owner of 614 Cookman?
Well, that's kind of irrelevant, but it is Sacman Enterprises.
Okay. And why would you not consider putting this, giving this permission through the entire CBD?
Because it has been our tradition here and for not mine, but one when I came in, that we we tend to take these requests and make them pretty specific. I did go beyond the law and I put the block, but I, it's more that there was a specific request for the specific location, and I took this request to the council and to the board.
In my opinion, this is spot zoning at its very worst. If you're going to permit a micro brewery in this particular block, a lot of blocks, it should be permitted in the entire Central Business District. What makes this property unique that it should have this exemption that nobody else has?
Well, let me explain that, again, redevelopment areas can have spot zoning, and there has been case law that says they are actually very well suited to spot zoning because you're targeting specific light and you're aiming at specific tools to revitalization that you can curate what goes where in a redevelopment area. And this site is particular to the micro brewery because it has a very large floor plate. This was a gym, and it has two floors with very and very large floor to ceiling heights that can accommodate the equipment. Not every place in the downtown, and a lot of places in the downtown do not do not have that that in in the physical building.
There are several other buildings in that Central Business District that could have that particular configuration. The building on the corner of Press Plaza and Cookman on Lake and Press Plaza, there's another micro brewery, there's one on Main. So I don't know why this particular site is getting this particular consideration. I have no objection to putting a micro brewery in the Central Business District. However, I think it should that it should be extended to any landowner in that and not kept at one. And yes, there are exceptions to the spot zoning issue, but this I don't think is particularly one of them. Just my opinion, but I have no objection, as I say, to having a micro brewery in the Central Business District, but I don't, I think it should be open to any establishment in that district.
I agree with Jim, it is a definitely a worst case spot zone. I mean, if you're going to allow it, just allow it in the CBD. And the market would dictate if it's something that other developers want to do, and there's other, you know, facilities, other buildings that are suitable for it, so I agree with Jim.
I do want to comment that this, so this is, I shouldn't say a loophole, because that's probably the wrong word, from our liquor license laws, but this is its own type of liquor license, so that's, it would be an additional drinking establishment in the downtown. In other words, this, the council does not have the same control over this type of liquor license as does other classes. So I just want you to keep that in mind.
Okay, I understand that, so but then you're saying, all right, well, this particular parcel will allow you to have a liquor license, but we're not going to allow anyone else to have the same opportunity that we're granting this one particular parcel. I just don't, I just don't think that's, I just don't agree with that.
Well, can you, can you, Michelle, can, I don't know, for anyone else that can help me out here, is that what is the, what is the downside of allowing this for the whole CBD, like Rick and Jim are saying? What's the downside of that? When you, when you, because you pointed out the liquor license, so what, tell me, explain that.
So right now, so with liquor licenses, there's a fixed number of liquor licenses permitted in the city, and they have to be approved by council. If there's a transfer or an expansion of a liquor license, like we've seen on whole blocks where that are using one liquor license, needs council approval. With a micro brewery, it's a whole different class of liquor license that. with a micro brewery, it's a whole different class of liquor license that does not um the council doesn't have the same discretion on a yes or a no. So if you open up, it up to the whole CBD, those are all new, you know, new liquor license that pop up that the council doesn't have control over. And I have a feeling, and not to speak for the council, but I think that's something in the back of the council's mind with just doing a blanket approval for, for this use, when it's the creation of a new type, a new liquor license.
But I think, go ahead. Well, I'll just go one step further and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I actually feel that our, what's been expressed, whether in our master plan or otherwise, is that maintaining a diversity of uses in our Central Business District that isn't overwhelmingly or overwhelmingly more than it already is drinking establishments and restaurants goes to the overall health of the Central Business District. So to have retail establishments, stores that are open before noon and are serving a different purpose than, than drinking actually is healthy for the overall downtown.
Right, we want a mix of businesses. A mix of businesses is what's healthiest for the downtown.
Michelle?
Yes.
Um if this is approved, this doesn't preclude anyone else from also wanting to operate or own a micro brewery in the Central Business District, does it?
It does, because this amendment is only to permit it in block two four oh four.
And also, I may, if I may interject, I'm sorry for interrupting. We do not approve or disapprove. All we do is give recommendations back to the council as to whether or not the request is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. We're not here to approve an application. We're only here to give, this is advice and consent, or advice. This is our, under our advisory powers that we give the board, the mayor and council a list of what we think is inconsistent with the master plan and we give them advice. They don't have to, they don't, they can ignore us. They don't have to follow our advice at all.
Hey, hey, hey Moore, for a second. Let me just go back to something that I thought I heard. Um as far as all these liquid licenses, mayor and council approves, totally not true. Uh ABC, New Jersey State Alcohol Beverage Commission approves. Dig a tunnel, dig a doorway, and you gotta, you can continue the license. The city, myself, I'll speak for myself, uh I'm totally against it. But we've called ABC out on it and they've told us to go F yourselves. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not like a big advocate of like expanding liquor licenses. As far as this applicant, uh are they going to give up their uh are they going to continue their uh other enterprise on the Sulu Avenue?
No, they're closing it. They've gonna move some of the, the larger manufacturing and distribution out of town.
Thank you.
I, I have one more follow-up question, because I, I do think there is this whole thing, I realize this is just one location, but it is about finding the right balance of uses in downtown. And so, Michelle, your testimony said that this is consistent with the master plan because it's a modern use. Um I guess modern, well, brewing is the most ancient thing of all time. But so what do you mean by modern? Can you just extract, like, why is this good for our master plan?
No, I'm sorry. When I say like that, the whole, no, of course brewing.
No, I know, I'm just.
It's that, you know, one of the updates we did were, were these uses that were not contemplated twenty years ago. And clearly, microbrewing is one of them because it actually, you know, the state license for it is relatively new and this concept of um again, you're consuming, it's, it's this two-part thing, the tasting room that you're consuming onsite. And it's, it's again, goes with the, the whole craft brewery movement. That's the more modern use, I should say. And it's consistent with the master plan in that we are expanding where it's permitted, but then I go back, like I said, to the design, and council and John's right. They don't, you know, it's ABC and, and council can impose certain things, but, and that's why though, I, we thought it was wise to limit it and take it as a case by case.
And I, I think I would generally agree with that on just on the counter to um allowing it everywhere. I just, I, and I have no objection to this individual site. I just think as a planning board, we do need to have discussions that if we want greater diversity of retail, just think about who goes to micro breweries. Just think about it. Does everyone in our city go to micro breweries? Probably not. So if we do want a greater diversity of uses that makes our downtown representative, and again, I'm not objecting to this particular referral, I think we have to do something about it. We have to either start attracting those businesses or whatever, because every space that we give over to another drinking establishment actually means that it's not available for any other amount, or for at least years in the year. These are usually ten-year, twenty, you know, leases with renewal. And it's not available to uses that might be representative or attractive to a more diverse population. So that's I'm done. That was a question, I guess.
So, so are, are we also, so are we saying that, that if another location should come up, let's say, on, on Lake Avenue or on Forest or someplace that, or Madison or someplace where somebody would like to um have a micro brewery, they would have to do the same process by having it essentially spot zone?
Yes, or I would call it the curation of your retail mix.
Right, okay. So someone can, but then I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm very torn because I, I, I do like the idea. I think that we need some consistency. Uh but at the same time, I don't, I'm trying to figure out what the downside is of, of of allowing one and then, all right, the next person that comes in, who's going to be the one to say, no, I'm not going to create a resolution that allows you to have a micro brewery? Who's going to say that?
It would be the municipal council.
Yeah, the redevelopment agency.
Right, so this request comes via, to the municipal council, whether or not to refer it to the planning board.
Okay, Moore again. And, and again, I'm not busting anybody's back. It's just something I've been saying for at least six years. The city of Asbury Park is screwed up, where I'm just going to pick a site. Uh if the hardware store is still their business, it's like ten thousand square feet and open up another uh brew house, I mean the, the requirement for parking is zero. So now this applicant's requirement for parking is zero. And believe me, this re, this, this person applying is the nicest people in the world. I'm not looking to hammer them. This is something like, you know, if the planning board would crack the city's back and say, hey, look, we'll approve these things in the future. But you gotta like change your ordinances to provide planning, Michelle. I mean, or parking, I'm sorry. Parking, Michelle, I mean, we cannot have breweries, we cannot have bars, we cannot have everything opened up, everything. But no parking plan. And right now, any business opens in the CBD, parking, zero, zero, zero. Thank you.
Because buildings of record do not have to provide parking. I mean, we can you can make the change for the, I mean, this plan is unique with the, the, with the pay for parking provision. And it's the only plan in the city with it. And I mean, you, we could put in here if you want, that they have to participate in, in that, although I act, truthfully, I, I don't see how that, that, that can be realistic, but.
It would have to be an amendment to the CBD regs.
I mean, this is an amendment to the CBD regs.
Yeah, but no, we, that would have to come from the legislative body, which is the governing body.
Right, so, you know, it's the governing body referred this to the planning board. The governing body, you know, when it goes back, because this is a resolution going back for ordinance, it could either you know, we, we can make, I don't know, make changes. The governing body doesn't have to entertain it, but the governing body did refer this to the planning board. But this is um, and I also want everyone to know that there was an amendment made to Main Street redevelopment plan before I started working for the city to allow Dark City Brewing Company to go in on Main Street and they didn't have to provide any parking. And it was so-called spot zoning. It was a cure, it was only that site was permitted to have it. And there was, you know, there was no parking um put into that amendment.
For reason?
Have you seen?
Oh, okay, okay. No, you forgot. That was however many years ago. I think the whole point is that we keep passing it without addressing the larger issue, right? Because by that line of reasoning, Michelle, we should just keep passing it because we've done it previously.
Well, the, but no, I was going to say, that was a consideration taken by you know, so, by the board and the council at the time, but I also do believe this is a CBD that there's no place for them to put the parking here. And this is one of the reasons that the CBD has a pay for parking. Because otherwise, we would have businesses creating parking lots in our downtown and ruining the architectural integrity of the downtown, especially the Cookman corridor. Because buildings like this, this building is a hundred percent coverage. The only thing they can do is seek parking elsewhere, which there isn't many pri, there's almost no private opportunities to create a private parking lot or pay into the parking fund for a garage that the city would have to build.
Again, it's not about the applicant. The applicant some of the best people I ever met in my life. And so I don't want them to get hung up over logistics or anything else, but we, we just can't keep on moving anything and everything into the CBD and saying, no more parking. Uh I'm not looking for this one, but I mean, Michelle, I mean, you're, you're the developer of planning. You got to tell the mayor and council. Like, we have to do this, we have to do that. And, and again, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I mean, we just cannot keep on approving projects that have no parking where nobody can get to and hoping one day the city will find the money to build a parking garage.
This redevelopment plan was written with that in mind. That's why there's the pay for parking. It's stated in this redevelopment plan that there would be a garage built to accommodate the parking in the district. Because there's no, because like I said, each individual property, almost every building here is at a hundred percent lot coverage. There's no place to put the cars. But I was going to say, with this amendment for a micro brewery, I would think that the, the thing is the, the car load that would come here is the same as a restaurant. So if we don't permit the micro brewery and a restaurant goes in there, it's the same car load. At least, that's apples to apples. I know there's been some requests to the municipal council for things that have a higher parking load that we have said, no. And that's, that's the bit of a difference here. And again, the goal of this redevelopment plan is that a garage is, was, is supposed to be built because individual businesses, or a few here and there, that they can, there's no room for them to accommodate the parking on site.
And I agree with you as far as this development. You, you say the plan, what year was the plan written?
Two thousand five.
How many years ago is that?
That's many.
Teen.
Yeah, so I mean, hey guys, I mean.
And everyone's been paying into the parking, but there's no functional way in which that's actually resulted in parking spaces.
I don't even believe that's true. Nobody's been paying into the parking.
No, that's not true, that we've collected.
Some people have been paid in the parking. Okay, well, then that should be a question I ask on record. So it's on the planning board.
Michael Manzella. I think.
How much money is there paid into the planning board?
No.
And, and, and to the parking, I mean believe me, not enough to build a parking garage.
Uh when, when we, excuse me, I, I need to talk about procedure. Hate to be a pain in the neck lawyer, but are we going to allow cross-examination of this witness for, to talk about parking in the CBD zone? Are we going to, are we going to, when we open this up to the public, are we going to get into that discussion? For, for a proposed plan amendment for a micro brewery? I need to know that from the board because we're going to get questions about all of this testimony. And I want to know if you want those questions on, uh when we're supposed to be looking at this from the point of view of whether or not this proposed use is consistent, were not consistent with the master plan.
You're clippin' maybe? You're clippin'?
Think that if, if we have to look at the, the task at hand, like you're saying, Jack, that, that our job as a planning board for this is exactly that, is to determine if it's part of the master plan, consistent with the master plan or not.
Yes.
That's, that's the question.
That's the scope of our review.
That's it.
Right.
I know that we, we've cracked out on that scope.
Yeah, we're having a major discussion about parking in the CBD zone.
So how do we, what is the argument? How do we decide if it's consistent with the master plan? What is the, what is the particular part of the master plan that it is consistent with?
That will be up to Michelle to tell us that.
It's, it's consistent with the master plan in that the, the master plan talked about permitting certain uses that the old zoning did not take into account, such as urgent cares and microbreweries. Con, uh, uh, I'm using the old term group homes. So this is how this is consistent with the master plan. It's not inconsistent with the master plan because the master plan does not talk about limiting limiting uses in the C, in the CBD.
And it's more again, I totally agree with you, Michelle, and Jack and everybody else, Barbara. But what I think needs to be done, because I'm looking to help at the council level, I think the planning board should take a strong stance and say hey, mayor and council, you should revisit what's going on in the CBD and other parts of the city as far as parking, because you guys are twenty years behind the light here.
That would be revisiting the, the parking requirements for, in this particular case, for our micro brewery.
No, it would be for the whole CBD. You can't, we can't.
Yeah, the whole CBD.
Talk about park, I don't know why we're talking about park.
Yeah. I would have to agree with that. If you're going to talk about, that's a globe, that's an entire district-wide issue, not just for us, one individual micro brewery. That's for a revisiting of the whole entire parking scheme under the CBD plan and how can you improve it? Overall, for all your uses within the CBD, whether it's a micro brewery or retail store or whatever.
So, so it sounds as though, and keep me within the rails here, it sounds. So so it sounds as though, and keep me within the rails here, it sounds as though our decision is pretty much to say, are we in agreement that having a micro brew brewery in the CBD in this particular location, we recommend it? Or do we recommend it for all of the CBD anywhere, so no spot zoning? Or that we don't recommend it at all, anywhere?
We don't recommend it, we have to come up with how it's inconsistent with.
Right, and and it and from what we've heard is that it is consistent with the master plan. Now, so then there are two choices. Is it agreeing to have it where uh, for this particular applicant? Or is it to say it should be anywhere in the CBD?
Yeah, I can see where you can make that comment.
Because we're, it is consistent.
Yeah. So. Make that additional comment.
We could, we could make a recommendation one way or another.
Yeah.
And that's where I think that the board has to figure it out.
Yep. And that's what we should be focused on.
Okay, and what is the the plan, who who does the planning board report that is part of this proposed amendment to the plan?
We we, under our advice, anytime you propose uh, there's two advi- there's advisory powers and we have application powers, where we have judicial powers. And there's legislative powers where we create the master plan. All the, all we're doing here is an advi- we're in an advisory position. We have no power over the mayor and council, we're not approving or disapproving. We're just raking recommendations from a planning perspective. Whether we have, after we've listened to the testimony, whether or not we feel that this proposed use that's being requested is consistent or inconsistent with the master plan.
And I feel prepared to act on that. I guess it's that number four, no, number three in what we're actually approving says that the planning board is authorized and directed to prepare a report of its recommendations.
Yeah, the report is typically our recommendations. They're there, sometimes we have ten, sometimes we have two. So if you wanted to say, okay, this is consistent, however, we also recommend that the council should should take a look at whether or not uh, micro breweries should be allowed throughout the entire CBD zone. That's fair enough.
Okay.
Not just on a case-by-case basis, but possibly develop regulations from a zoning perspective that would permit these throughout the zone based on certain criteria. The parking issue is an entirely different issue as to what you need to do in the CBD zone.
Right, that's not really something we can add, add or comment on here.
No.
Um, is there anybody from the planning board? Because I mean, we've heard so far from at least two people that believe that uh, it should be throughout the whole CBD. Is there anyone that feels that? Um, because because I'm looking for input, that's all I'm looking for, not trying to convince anybody of anything uh, of of having it to this one particular developer.
I am in support of having it to the one particular development because of our master plan, which promotes greater diversity of uses and not all eating and drinking establishments, which also would lead to more neighborhood local retail.
So 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 for this particular particular developer, that's what.
Eric, you're muted.
All right.
I know you were speaking, you saw your hand going, but I'm like, I can't hear.
Uh, so who are the two members who spoke in support of a um uh, uh, allowing them in any in any location?
There was, there was Jim and Rick have made comments.
Okay, and I I I think I tend to fall on the side of in redevelopment zones, the curation of certain types of uses is exactly what allows us to preserve our role in sort of steering a redevelopment zone and therefore allow, like, taking uses on a case-by-case basis is is what redevelopment zones are, to some extent, designed for. That's why they don't fall under our regular zoning. So I would say that we should review conditional or, uh, this isn't a conditional use, um. We should review special requests and applications on a case-by-case basis rather than blanket blanket allowing in a redevelopment zone.
I I think one, this is Jen Sauter, one question that, um, I mean, back to, I think when Yvonne had asked, um, or some, Yvonne, I believe, said, does this mean if somebody else made this request, it would be, and I don't want to put words in Yvonne's mouth, but if somebody uh, so I understand, if somebody else were to come forward to do this in another s- spot, it's not as if they couldn't make that request as well, correct?
Yes.
All right.
That's what I said, yes.
And the city council, not the planning board, would be the ones who decide whether or not to refer that request.
Right. I know, yes.
And 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 that would be, I think, appropriate, right? Like, if we were to allow micro breweries to happen anywhere, and in a hypothetical situation, they there are now ten micro breweries downtown. And, you know, that's not a, that doesn't sound like a good idea. But if there's one, and then maybe there's another, maybe another, you know, we have, you have to sort of kind of see like, how it's turning out. So I do think that the review of them is a valuable asset to kind of piloting and assuring a kind of reasonable level of diversity of businesses within the district.
I'd like to, this is Rick, I'd like to clarify a point. I didn't say that I think they should be allowed all over the CBD. What I said was that I believe it's a spot zone, and if because you're a spot zone, you either allow it or you don't allow it. So I want to clarify, I don't support micro breweries all over the CBD. I want to be very clear about that.
Okay, so so would would you, I'm sorry, I'm not quite trying.
Well, the thing, I I guess the the issue, though, is it seems like it should be like a conditional use, not just I still believe it's a spot zone, you're allowing one particular use in one particular spot for one particular applicant. Uh, it seems like it should be under some type of a conditional use versus just this use is allowed at this spot. Uh, that's, I guess that's just kind of my take on it.
I think Michelle said we can't see conditional use of stuff.
What's that? And and you know, we just recently redid the master plan and, you know, all all the permitted uses were reviewed and never was that, you know, micro brewery considered an acceptable use for the CBD, and now we're saying, well, maybe it is for just this one spot. It just seems we're kind of.
But 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 this is in a redevelopment zone, which is different than the 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 standard vanilla zoning. And so we did, we can't approve conditional uses in a redevelopment zone. So the only power we have to control conditional uses are through these referrals.
Right, you, conditional uses, we, because an application cannot be heard by the zoning board if it's in a redevelopment area. If you put in conditions in a redevelopment plan and they're just used, like, there's no relief. Conditional uses just don't make sense in a redevelopment area.
Maybe I can help.
Go ahead.
By May, okay. Jurisdictional issues. Planning board, conditional uses go before the planning board. They're the old special reasons in other states and so on. If you do not adhere to the specific conditions of the conditional use ordinance, it's uh, goes before the zoning board. Planning board loses jurisdiction. Zoning boards traditionally do not have any power within a CBD zone. You don't, you don't, wi- within a redevelopment zone, you don't legislate ver- you don't legislate by variance in a C in a business, in a uh, redevelopment zone. You legislate by the redevelopment agency allowing amendments. It's just another form that gets you to the same place.
I have another question. So say we approved it, or we recommend that it is approved, and then.
No, we don't recommend that.
I mean, we.
We will only recommend that's whether or not it's consistent or inconsistent with the master.
Okay.
It's the mayor and council.
Trying to get, the point I'm trying to get to, though, is say, following Yvonne, so at some later date, someone else wants to come in and put a micro brewery at some other location uh, within the CBD. Is there any kind of legal, you know, we are, is there any kind of?
Yeah, the legislative body doesn't.
No, I mean, that that they could, they could file lawsuits, saying, well, you'd allow it here, why wouldn't you allow it here?
No, 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 that's been well established, that's case law.
That's what I'm.
If it's not suppo- if if if, remember, we're we're in a sec, our role, the the redevelopment agency is in the paramount role. If they don't want something, they don't have to entertain, they can, when somebody goes before and says, I want to put a micro brewery over here, they could say, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna entertain your amendment, we're not gonna vote on it, we're not gonna send it to the planning board. That's that's the threshold decision as to whether or not it should be permitted because the redevelopment agency control has more power within the redevelopment zones. Which is why everything goes through the redevelopment agency, the oceanfront and all that, before it gets to us. They're the gatekeeper.
Got you, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else on the planning board have anything else that they would like to contribute before we go uh, opening up, open up questions um, by the public?
Yeah, more one last time. I think what I was looking for, I have no problem with project. But I think what I was looking for is like, maybe a a letter with like, maybe a majority of the planning board saying, hey, city of Asbury Park. You know, you got to get your game together as far as parking the CBD. Because one day there's gonna be fifty businesses with five thousand cars and you got two thousand spots. So that's all I'm looking for.
Okay, aside, that's outside the scope of this, at what's before us, however, the planning board can send a letter to the mayor and council uh, that says, based on applications that we are seeing, we recommend that the mayor and council revisit the parking requirements within the CBD zone. They appear to be dated. Sure, if that's what the council's looking for, from the mayor, from the planning board, that could be done, but that's totally outside this what we're doing to this with this. We can do that under all business, we can do it, we could do it anytime you like, it it's just, it's just not part of this.
My apology, okay?
No, that's okay.
Put it on the next meeting and put it tonight.
Yeah, do you know, I mean, if that's I requ- I requested Terry Reed years ago to review the CBD parking requirements and where we were supposed to have structures that had facades of residential and commercial uses and interior five and six-story parking uh, garages. I asked for that years ago. And it never went anywhere. So we could easily send a letter out. Once a year, the zoning board is supposed to give a report to the planning board and the mayor and council, saying the type of applications they see. And based on the type of applications, they can make recommendations, but we don't have to wait for that. If you can do this, it just as a general matter, as a planning board, the planning board feels that the city should review the CBD parking requirements, that's all. They say appear to be dated and inadequate. And then it's up to the mayor and council, as the redevelopment agency, to take it and go with it. We can do that.
Thank you, good enough.
Okay, Madam Chair, if we, if I may, before we get to cross-examination comments, I'd really like to announce that we're gonna limit it to the relevant issues at hand, not to discuss parking, not because tha- that's just a whole different world that's.
It really had, right, it really has nothing to do with this application.
Exactly, and the tat- testimony from Michelle is totally, with all due respect to Michelle, it's not that you did it intentionally, it's irrelevant to what we're doing. So there's no reason to be asking questions about parking. Okay. Okay.
Okay, would, um, if the board has no other questions, just let me know if you have any questions. If not, we're gonna open it up to the public. Go ahead, Arina.
Okay, um, first person we will call upon is Tracy Rogers. Please go ahead and state your name and address and ask your question.
Uh, Tracy Rogers, ten thirty-four Sewell Avenue. Uh, I just have a a question because I thought this was brought up. A couple of years ago, when I think, and and I could be mistaken, Michelle, you presented an amendment that said that we wanted to do businesses that were outside of the liquor realm, we wanted to do these things. And that amendment came up, and it seems we're back to the same thing of saying, and and not have nothing against the brewery because I think it's a a great business, uh, but I was just saying consistency as to whether it does or does not meet the parameters of of what we were looking to do to amend the uh, uh, the uh, the plan two. And that was brought up, and that was heavily discussed, and I think the the comments were, we want to go away from those businesses. And number two, um, I'm not gonna talk about the parking, but I'm I'm gonna talk about the legal ramifications of, and and there could be, Jack, there could be a lot of case law that that talks about spot zoning.
No, we're not, we're not gonna talk about that. No, we're not gonna talk about that. No, that's definitely, that's, this is exactly what I try to prevent during the course of this presentation. We're not gonna, it's well-settled law that you can do what they're requesting to do within a redevelopment zone. I'm not gonna go down that road, that's not what I'm here for, and that's not what we're doing. We're here to talk about whether or not this proposed amendment that was referred to us by the governing body is is or is not consistent with the master plan. That's what we're here for.
Okay, so.
Not to talk about spot zoning, not to talk about parking, and not to talk about what was, may have been proposed a number of years ago. It's what the current master plan says. Is this or is it not? And if it is, say so, and if it's not, it's not, say so again.
No, I'm asking, was that amendment that was made to the planning board to not do that? Is that part of the master plan right now? I I don't know.
No. The master plan was revisited a few years ago, and whatever was put in is put in. We we don't know what whether or not that's the result of something that came before the board a number of years ago.
Yeah, I could clarify it because what Tracy is talking about is exactly what John spoke about. What was in the master plan was making the request to to the state about limiting the expansion of an existing liquor license, which this municipality had done, and the state overruled us, but this is different.
Okay, so what, but was was that amendment that you made?
No, this was not an amendment, this was a re- recommendation of the master plan.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to know, is that, I didn't know if it was in there. So you're saying this is not on the master plan?
No, I stated, and I'll state again, that the master plan had recommended for commercial districts to allow certain uses that before the last update were never considered because they kind of didn't exist. Urgent care centers, micro breweries. Um, uh, that's the two that come to the top of my head, but it was a few, I mean, we just passed a bunch of them in the latest zoning amendment.
Be, wouldn't the answer to the question be to cut to the chase that the micro breweries are specifically mentioned in the master plan?
Yes, they are.
So then, so it's there, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Was that a, was that all, Mr. Rogers, or did you have another question?
Oh, no, that was it, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next caller is Ms. Rita Moreno. Go ahead and state your name and ask your question.
Hi, uh, Rita Moreno. Uh, are we talking, I I don't know the building by lot and block, but are you talking about the Newberry Building? Is that the building that we're talking about tonight? For the brewery?
I believe so, and Jack can help me out on that. It's where the uh, the gym was.
That's the.
Yeah, well, that, you know how big that bu-
That's the old Newberry building, yeah, you're right, Rita, that's the old Newberry building, yeah.
Do you know how big that building is for a brewery? Do you know how many people that would be going in there? I I was on the commission, I don't think it was twenty oh five for the master plan, because it's not even ten years yet. So it had to be another master plan that we did, and I don't ever remember the brewery being in it. We spent a whole year on that master plan. And I I thought that the business district was gonna be stores, we used to have nine shoe stores on Cook- We used to have nine shoe stores on Cookman Avenue. And I, I, I mean, I don't know what to say, but I didn't know if it was John's Bargain Store or, or Newberry. So it's Newberry. That, that's a gigantic place up and down. It has a basement. It has offices upstairs.
Rita, you testified. You're not answering, you're not asking questions.
Oh, all right. Well, I just wanted to know what building it was and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Okay, Michelle Gladon, please go ahead and and ask your question.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just have a quick question on something that Ms. Alonso said. I believe she said that this requires a special type of license, the micro brewery. And, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm asking, not stating fact. I thought that there were only a fixed amount of licenses allowed in our municipality or any municipality, and that this would be a transfer of license from one spot to the other. But now I'm hearing this is a special, so I'm wondering if this is a new license that upticks our amount of licenses in this community.
Well, this is not a regular liquor license. And I'll be honest, I don't know if the state caps how many you can have in a pally. This is different than a class A, B, or C liquor license.
So the license from the old place on Sewell will not be transferred to this location is what I'm asking, I guess fundamentally.
So from what I was told.
That's hearsay.
I'm sorry.
Do you know for a fact if they can?
If I want, no, 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 repeat. I think, no, no, I shouldn't say because I'm only saying I think about whether, but let me just say, this is just a different class of license.
Okay.
Not the same as the liquor licenses that tip, we're, that like we're the class A, B, and C that were typically associate with a restaurant, with selling, with a liquor store.
Right.
This is a different license.
So I will say my question is a bit unfair. That's probably a question I should be asking the ABC. So thank you, Michelle. I appreciate you.
But I, okay.
No, I, I just was curious because I, I just wanted to know what happens to the liquor license is if it, if it's but again, it's probably a question for the ABC and not for you. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
No problem.
Well, more, more, well, more per second. I thought it was a, a transfer from A to A. If it's not, I guess that'll come out in the worst. And I guess that somebody's going to have to tell us that.
I'm going to, actually, I'm not going to say because I'm not certain.
Don't say anything.
No, yeah, again, it, my question was unfair and I realized it halfway in that this is really a question I should be asking of the ABC and I'll do that and get a response. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladon. Okay, and the last hand raised, I show Mr. Magnoli, go ahead and state your name and ask your question.
Isn't it state my name and address?
Yes.
Well, how come the last caller didn't state her address?
Sorry about that. Let's bring, let's bring her back.
Okay.
I, I apologize, Mr. Magnoli. I apologize, Mr. Magnoli. My name is Michelle Gladon. I live at two ten Second Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Ernest Magnoli, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. So I, I have a question for Ms. Glad, I mean, for Ms. Alonso. So we are, you are saying, I believe, that spot zone or for this applicant to, to put a, a micro brewery that's on the other side of town that's going to leave, I think with its liquor license and go somewhere else, but it wants to open up in both the owner of the property, Sacman.
You got to get to the question. You're characterizing.
Is the owner, is the owner?
You're doing a preliminary. Get to the question.
All right. And the other thing, am I going to be able to comment after this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So is the owner of the building the same as the owner applicant?
That's, that, I'm sorry, Mr. Magnoli, that is not a relevant question and it was not testified to.
It was testified to.
Next question. Next question.
Is, is Sacman the applicant? You testified.
There is no applicant.
Who was the proponent? Who requested the amendment?
Asbury Park Brewery.
There you go.
I, I, I thought you, you didn't just testify.
She answered the question. Asbury Park Brewery is the applicant.
Okay.
There was some mention of Sacman at some point, so, okay. So if it was Sacman, it was Sacman. If Sacman's behind it, it's Sacman's behind it. Go ahead, next.
Okay. Did you say that Sacman is the owner of the building?
We just sat down saying it's irrelevant. Who owns the building?
Can I ask a question? What is relevant?
Relevant questions. I've been asking you for the last two years to ask relevant questions.
Wait a minute.
And I've tried to help you, but you think I'm your adversary and I'm really not. Just ask your questions that are relevant to what we're doing. You heard me say that our task is to look at this for consistency with the master plan. Those are the questions you should be asking.
Ms. Alonso, did you talk about parking tonight?
I already said parking's out of bounds.
I just asked if she talked about it.
I don't care. We're not going to talk about it at all. I mentioned that before. Did you hear that?
You're running the meeting. I understand. I'll move on.
I am acting as the board attorney and that's the way I do it.
Mr. Magnoli, do you have any further questions?
Yeah, I do. I don't know why you get rushed through everything.
Ask your questions, Mr. Magnoli, please.
I'm trying, but I, it seems like you're running the meeting.
Never mind. That's your second one. That's your first warning. Next warning, you're going to be muted.
Okay, there's going to be a comment section next?
Yes, we've already answered.
I'll wait, I'll, I'll wait to that and then I'll make my comment.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. City Historian, please go ahead and state your name and your address and ask your questions.
Hello, folks. How are you?
Hello, Warner.
Warner Baumgartner, City Historian, four oh two Fifth Avenue. I also would like to get a little more clarity as to how this process works. An applicant, well, a requester was mentioned, Asbury Brewery. So Asbury Brewery made this request of the Department of Zoning and Planning?
It goes to the city manager, this request, because and it then goes to the municipal council to consider it.
Okay, and, and has it gone through that process? It went from the city manager to the council and now being referred to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, what vested interest does this requester have in the property, if any?
Should I answer this, Jack?
From our perspective, Warner, as a planning board, it's meaningless to us. It's irrelevant. We're, we're, I'm trying, the process, you're correcting the answer that was just given to you, okay? We are just here to look at the request that's been forwarded to us for consistency with the master plan. We don't get into who owns the property. We don't get into who the applicant, who they might be, who the corporate officers are. We don't get into any of that. That's not what we're here. This isn't an application for development where we dig into the details. That's been done at the mayor and council level. It's up to them. If they've, they've decided in their wisdom to pass it on to us, our only task is to give, is to give a review. We have no authoritative powers. We don't have any control as to whether or not this is ultimately approved by the mayor and council. We're just here to tell them, is this or is it not consistent with the master plan? That's it.
Understood, a hundred percent, Jack. Thank you for clarifying that for everybody. Um, I just, I just find it a little troubling that property owner has been mentioned in the testimony and requester has been mentioned in the testimony when they are truly irrelevant. It's simply a request to change zoning.
Essentially, they're, they're asking for an exception to the zoning ordinance or the redevelopment plan as it exists. Yeah.
Council is requesting this.
Yeah, they, they've requested it of the council. And the council obviously is, has an interest in possibly doing it, or they wouldn't have sent it over to us.
Exactly. Yeah, I just want that to be clear for myself and for everybody. That this request coming from city council, not from a property owner or a business owner.
That is correct. Yes, a hundred percent.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, looks like we don't have any more hands raised. I would like to, I have been receiving some requests for a, a rest break, a bathroom break, if you will. I'd like to, to propose that for us to be back in, in five minutes.
Can we get a motion?
So Alexis Taylor.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Alexis Taylor and a second by Barbara Krizak. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Five minute break.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to come back. Okay, then we'll take rail, roll call. Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Jim Henry. Mr. Henry, you're muted. All right, we'll come back to Mr. Henry. Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Eric Gallapo.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Krizak.
Here.
And Mr. Henry, did that work?
Well, we know he's here.
Yeah, we know he's here. I just can't get a verbal confirmation. Do we accept a?
Yeah, we can accept, we can see him. He's here.
Okay, all right. I will vouch that he's there. Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, the next item that's on the, the agenda is the time for public comment. Can I get a, can I get a motion to open public comment, please?
Move it.
A second at Souter.
I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jennifer Souter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment open. And I show one hand, Mr. Magnoli. Please state your name, your address. Wait for Mr. Serpico to swear you in and then I will start a three minute clock. Go ahead.
Ernest Magnoli, seven ten Northeast Seventh Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. My right hand is raised.
You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
So I'm starting to learn more and more about this application from listening tonight to the testimony. And I, I had no idea that we were talking about the Newberry Building, the, the gym building. And the girth and size of that with the back entrance on Lake with three floors, that's got to be fifty thousand square feet. Where, where are all these customers going to park? And then when you try and talk, ask a question about parking, the, the board attorney says, oh, you can't ask that. That's irrelevant. Okay, then when you ask about who's the applicant, oh, you can't ask that? That's irrelevant. Look, let's face the facts, okay? The city attorney opened up Dark City Brewery. That's how they got that variance. Everybody knows it. Fred Raffredo. It was denied, but then he sold out. And it's, it's known that he was involved there and got that variance. And a lot of people believe that's why the variance was gotten.
Mr. Magnoli, mute him, please. What does that have to do with this matter before the board this evening? Nothing. You're allowed to make comments, but the comments have to be relevant. Please proceed. Make sure he gets his full time.
Make sure what?
Make sure that you get your full time to make your, your comments.
I stopped the clock, Mr. Magnoli, so when you're ready, I'll begin the clock again.
Okay, I disagree that it's not relevant because you all brought it up.
No, we didn't. You just did. You just mentioned.
Wait a minute.
This is your second warning. I ruled it's irrelevant. I'm the board attorney, not you. We don't need to hear about Mr. Mr. Raffredo. It's got nothing to do with what's before the board this evening. So talk about what's before the board and that's it. Unmute him, please.
Okay, so I'll talk about the, what was presented tonight and testified to. As soon as I get the recording, I'm going to send it to the state and I'm going to disagree with the way you're running these meetings.
Mr. Magnoli, you're out of order. And I suggest, Madam Chairwoman, that we mute him. He can threaten me. He can send anything to anybody he likes. I don't care. I'm doing my job.
Next, next person that would like to comment, please.
Ms. Moreno, go ahead and state your name, your address. Mr. Serpico will swear you in and I will begin the clock.
Rita, are you there?
Rita.
Rita, unmute yourself.
Hi, you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, Rita, oh, do I, Rita Moreno, five oh four Eighth Avenue, Asbury Park. I got my hand up.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
It's the Newberry. I can't believe what I hear sometimes. I guess I've been around a long time. If we, if this is our business district, I, I think even if you had a hundred dollars, you couldn't spend it on buying anything because there's no place to go. There's a few little stores here and there. This is a business district. It's becoming Springwood Avenue where they had all the bars. And that's what it is now. I mean, whether it's a brewery or a bar license, it's almost the same thing. They're going to be drinking inside this place, this monster place. I heard about six months ago that this was going to be a gigantic bar and I, I laughed my head off because I couldn't, I, I was laughing because, you know, I know it is a department store with three floors, two floors and office space. And I, it's just the wrong place for it. Nothing against breweries, although there's too many of them in one little mile. At bars and, and that's all you have here now. This used to be a family town. It's no longer that. And I, I just think it's the wrong place and, and I hope the council does what's right. I know you're just reviewing it. I don't think it should have gotten to the planning board. I should have just been an outright no, which is hard to say in this town. But that's all I have to say. It's not the place for it. There's no parking and there's an entrance on Lake Avenue. It's just going to create more problems for everybody. And, you know, I know you're all volunteers and I know you're trying to do a good job, but you have to look at the total picture here, what, what's going to happen to this street. It's not a very wide street. So, and there's no parking. And I think, Michelle, I think that you were looking at the wrong master plan because it's not ten years since I was on that master plan committee. I think it was in twenty eleven or twelve. It's just the wrong plan you're looking at, if that's what you're looking at. And as far as the new codes go, I don't think they're in effect. And as far as the new codes go, I don't think they're in effect yet. It's not 30 days. Don't they, doesn't an ordinance take 30 days to get approved after they pass it in City Hall? It's not 30 days yet. They just approved it two weeks ago. So, I don't know if that has anything to do with it. I'm not a lawyer like Mr. Serpico. But that's all I wanna say. It's not the place to put it. And that's it. Maybe a lot of little stores would look good in there, where you could go shop, like a little mini mall. That would be a good idea. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, and City Historian, go ahead and, sorry, go ahead and state your name, address, and Jack will swear you in. Whoops. Sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Baumgartner.
Aye, Werner Baumgartner, 402 Fifth Avenue, City Historian. Right hand raised.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, seems to be between a rock and a hard place here. I would personally not have a problem with a brewery, but the parking issue that was raised certainly needs to be vetted later on in terms of a comprehensive look at the downtown, including the proposed parking deck and things of that nature. What I am troubled by, though, is the testimony that was presented by identifying requestors, specific businesses, and property owners. If this is truly a request by the city council to just change the zoning on a particular block, that's what the testimony should have been limited to. It would have clarified what was going on here, instead of putting personal issues on the table, such as property ownership or business ownership.
Okay.
You don't have any sound, do you?
Something's happening. Sorry, Werner.
Okay. Um, other than that, um, no other comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Werner.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Uh, Mr. Henry, that was your sound coming through, so we were able to hear you. I did mute you, though, so when you're ready to speak, just unmute yourself. I do not show any other hands raised at this time.
Can I get a motion to close public comment, please?
Hear what she said?
No.
Unmute yourself.
I have done that.
No, you're okay, Jim.
No, we can hear you. We can hear you, Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, motion to close public comment? I'm sorry, I didn't get, get the motion.
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Souter.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mike Manzella and a second by Jennifer Souter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comment closed.
Does the, do any of the board members have any comments they would like to make regarding this application to each other before we vote? Right. Um, I, I do. Um, and
I can't hear a thing, man.
Are you okay, Mr. Henry? Can you hear us, Mr. Henry?
I have that on.
We can hear you.
We can hear you. Yeah, either, I guess.
We can hear you, Mr. Henry. Can you hear us?
Pam, we can hear you and Mr. Henry, but I don't think you can hear us.
All right.
Can you hear us now, Mr. Henry?
Send that in partway.
Okay.
Can you hear us, Mr. Henry? Can you just wave your arm? If you can hear us? Can you hear us, Jim? All right, where do we go from here, Jack?
Just keep going.
Just keep going?
Sure. We know he's here.
We know he's here.
If we can't get a verbal, then we just, he won't, he won't vote, that's all.
Um, what I'd like to, um, I do see that the, that this application or this, uh, uh, this is recommended, and it is, it is consistent with the master plan. And this kind of, um, looking at individual requests is, is, is good for a redevelopment zone, and that's everything that we have here. So, um, in my opinion, um, I would recommend that it does go to the council, um, as is. If there is anything that anybody else wants to say, they're welcome to say it. Or we go straight to the vote. Um, John?
Yeah, I have no problem going to the vote, but I'll say the voters say it now. And, uh, obviously, being the mayor and mayor and council forwarding this to the planning board, um, the applicant has been nothing except very positive, Asbury Park. I thought the space fit and everything. Um, but going back to some questions like Rita said, look at the total picture. Like Werner said, look at parking. It's been something I've been trying to lobby for, for many years, as far as, like, our CBD plan has no plan as far as parking. So, I'm hoping maybe after we approve this, because I'm gonna vote yes, that the planning board sends a letter to the councils or saying
Turn that off.
Turn that off. What?
Saying, hey, look, we have no problem approving this, and we can improve the next one, but eventually, it's gonna be like putting like 10,000 cars in a parking lot that has 2,000 spots. And it's something that the council has to address. And I'm hoping the planning board steps forward and helps me to address that issue that I've been trying to address with the council. That's all I have to say. I plan to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to mention before we go to a vote?
I just want clarity. The only thing we're voting on is whether or not this fits into the master plan. Is that correct?
Right, if it's consistent with the master plan.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that this indeed is, uh, this request is indeed consistent with the master plan, uh, and then we should move forward with an approval.
Move it, Mike Manzella.
Mike, you're the second.
I have a motion by Barbara Krzysztof and a second by Michael Manzella.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Jim, can you hear us? If you can, raise your hand. Jim, if you can hear us, okay. Okay, so he can hear us. If you vote yes on the motion, raise your hand. If you vote no, don't. Looks like a no.
Okay, we'll take that as a no. Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
No.
And Barbara Krzysztof?
Yes.
Thank you. I have, uh, two noes and a remainder of yesses, so this will be, uh,
It'll get referred back to the council.
To the council.
With a resolution indicating it's consistent. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next item that we have on the agenda, do we need this time? Do we need the time, uh, Jack?
Uh, is, what's on, what's next on your agenda?
It says the discussion.
Yeah, it's just a very, very loose discussion. No substantive discussion, please, because there's no one here. We received a letter from Mr. Lieberman's office indicating something about floodplain regulations and a lack of, uh, compliance. I've sent, it's all very technical stuff. I've sent it off to Jason. Jason is going to look at it and get back to me. And then we may have, what's called, we may have a motion for reconsideration, and based on what the evidence shows, then we would decide whether or not to reopen, uh, the case based on newly discovered evidence. But at this point, we have no, no idea of what they're saying, whether or not it's true or not. Uh, and it's very technical in nature, and Jason's going to give me a chronological sequence of events, and then I can, then I can talk to the board about it. That's, that's all I wanted to bring up about it. And if we hopefully get that, we would have to put it on at some, for discussion or a vote or something like that, depending upon what I see at one of the meetings in July. Not to reopen, not whether this would be reopened that evening, but whether or not we would even entertain the motion to reopen it, because I'm not satisfied from what I've read yet that what's being said is true. So, we need to see that from an engineering, technical perspective before we can do anything. And that's it.
All right. Okay, so, uh, that's the last item on our agenda. Uh, I'm going to ask for motion to adjourn. And actually, the next meeting, Irina?
Yes, um, the next meeting will be, the next regular meeting of the planning board will be Monday, July 12, 2021, at 7:00 PM, in person, in council chambers. Uh, masks will be required unless there's further notice.
Irina, will you be working with Michelle to prepare the proper notices to transfer us from uh, remote to in-person?
Yes, they will be, um, published this week.
Okay, great. I would like to see them when you're done with them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn. Anyone?
Congratulations on finishing our last virtual meeting.
Eric, are you seconding the motion?
Yeah, I'll second that. I'll second that emotion.
Thank you. I have a motion by Barbara Krzysztof and a second by Eric Gallopo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. It's been torture.
Thank you.